Hello, everybody. Thank you for that. Let's start the meeting with a salute of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello, everybody. Welcome. A nice summary day. It is Tuesday, May twenty eighth. This is the regular monthly meeting of the planning board. It's five oh three P M or so. I'd like to welcome a new member of the planning board. Drew Harvey is sitting here to my right. He's officially an alternate for the planning board. Glad to have you here.
Thanks, John.
And this evening, Drew, because Nat Brown is not with us, you will be performing, you'll be acting as the regular member of the planning board. And just, we've spoken about this, but just so everyone here knows, because he's new, if there are issues that he doesn't understand because he's new, he'll let us know. And he can vote on things, and if he wants to recu, if he wants to abstain on certain votes, he can do that. If it's, if he understands it, he can vote on that as well. So, welcome. Minutes, have we had a chance to look at the minutes? And if so, I'd just add a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of the minutes? Thank you, all, unanimous. Work session, number two, Eleven Bridge Street LLC. So, we had a meeting, when was it, two weeks ago, for Eleven Bridge Street? Okay, the, the, the.
Monday.
Yeah, yeah, it was a special meeting. It's the first we've had in a very long time to schedule a public scoping session for Eleven Bridge. And that was, that's coming up on June twelfth in this room. So that will be our second special meeting in the, in the course of, you know, span of a month. So I wanted to make sure that people understood where we stand on that. So that, that will not be happening tonight, but if there are any questions about process, I'm happy to, we're happy to answer them. The, the scoping session will be, it was advertised, is being advertised. It was, it was noticed, the copies are in the library, copies are in here in Village Hall, is on the website.
And the building department. So the draft scope proposed for this board to review is in the, in the building department, at the public library.
Yep.
Online at the village's website, and it's also in the village clerk's office if the public wants to come and inspect that and leave it. And then the public scoping session is twelfth, and there's a written comment period after that. So I'll just say the written comment period ends June twenty first, and the close of business is four P M. So we would ask that those come in by that time.
Good.
So those can be forwarded.
Good, good.
And it's just a notice in the paper. My, my understanding is we don't need to post property as per. This is a notice pursuant to the secret regulations, not to the village code. Regulations with respect to posting for applications, it's different. So the notice is just in the paper.
Correct, correct.
Yeah.
So I, I think everything is in line for that. Yeah, and I know, I know this public interest is, I want to make sure that people in the public understand and are aware. And if there are any questions about that, please let, let me know. We'll try to answer your questions. But I think that's, I think it's all well understood. Did we cover everything? I think so. On that, good. We'll move on to number two then, which is one thirty-three Main Street, planning board application of Lynn Park Charveria. I'm mispronouncing that, I'm sure. I apologize. Oh, yeah, thank you, thank you. Ron, Ron's going to be recusing himself from this. And Dennis, we know you, but I'll have to ask you, ma'am, to introduce yourself and give us your address.
Oh, hi, I'm Lynn Park Charveria.
Nice to see you. And your, your address?
Oh, oh, sorry, one thirty-three Main Street.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
We were here last month, we didn't have a forum. There were some discussions, I think at the end of the meeting, you mentioned that you had some questions. You want to throw them out first, otherwise I'll just bring everybody up to speed on what's going on.
Bring us up to speed. I, I think you had some interaction with, with our consultant Cathy, so those were the questions. You know, it was. Yeah, yeah.
All right, so this is an existing two bay garage on Church Street. In nineteen eighty-four, we changed the zoning code to encourage the owners from Sage to Washington Street to use the back of their buildings for, like, in the downtown area. This is the first application that you're seeing, and this is since nineteen eighty-five, when it was, when that code was adopted. So we're converting the garage into a retail store. There is an issue dealing with handicap access, which I think we got worked out today. Paul D'Angelo, who's the engineer, is supposed to be on Zoom tonight. I'm not sure where he is.
Okay.
Here yet.
Doris, is there, is there anyone on Zoom, Doris? Look.
Um, he is, and John, well, um, the, 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 is, um, uh, who's his first one?
Just Paul D'Angelo, the, the, for the house. Okay, so I believe by this afternoon, between Cathy's office and the building inspector, we worked out what the issue has to be, to be resolved.
Okay.
And it'll be done within the next few days, hopefully. And then there was another question, which maybe Cathy could kick in on, because I'm not sure exactly what we're doing on the drainage issue.
Right.
I, I think we're okay. I'm, I'm, they're, on the survey, it says proposed. Those drainage facilities are actually in the ground. They've been there since we changed the.
I've seen them, yeah.
When, when the Gingerbread House turned into a retail store. So I think that they are, but we will get all the calculations put on the survey, the site plan for you.
I think it was the issue of capacity. That, that was the issue, yeah.
I actually found notes in the, the report that Doris sent to me today, so if you need to look at the size, and I have that.
Okay.
Well, Rosal was your engineer back in the day when we did the Gingerbread House. He wrote a report. I saw it tonight. And we're going to make sure Cathy gets a copy of that, so that she's satisfied.
Fantastic.
Again, it's the ADA question, how are we going to get people safely from the street into the building and back down the, what is now an apron? So I think, I think we're going to be okay with that. Question is whether you can hold a public hearing, and whether or not we can get a conditional approval, so we can go within and start working on the building, otherwise we never know in the summer.
Right.
It's been like almost, what, it's been two years or over two years?
We hung over the Z B A.
I remember you, I remember you at the Z B A, yeah, yeah. Kathy, I, I think you mentioned that you did, you're pretty much good to go on most questions.
So, yeah, and a lot of it is, just ends up being questions for the engineer to be able to demonstrate that this can work. But they will have a recessed entrance now. So when the door is open, they're not right out on, right on Church Street.
Yep.
But there is, you know, there's a change in grade from Church Street into the, what is the garage floor now, and that has to be leveled out a bit in order to be ADA compliant. And there may be an opportunity, and I'm not the engineer here, but to look at maybe some type of curving, so that way motorists driving up Church Street are aware that that is not a place to pull in. That, that is actually a sidewalk. So it's like a visual cue. And I talked to the building inspector about that as well.
And that, that improves.
That might be a way to do.
And that improves pedestrian safety, is essentially what it is, right?
Yeah.
People going in and out, kind of thing.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah, okay, fine, good, all right.
On the drain, on the drainage, though, it sounds like that what was on the survey has, is different than what actually was installed. And if the engineer does the calculations, and there's no change in the impervious surfaces, and they have enough storage, they might be fine. So I just don't know the answer to that.
Okay, okay. But those, those, some of those issues can be worked out probably even at a public hearing, I assume, right? I'm sorry?
Even as condition.
As a condition, that's what I mean to say, yeah.
So a public hearing is required if it's a special exception approval. But if it's just a site plan approval, it's up to the board whether or not to hold a public hearing. And usually it's based on public interest in the application. So Dennis, did people come to your Z B A here and testify or ask something?
No, it was publicly.
How many times were you on before the board?
Two or three times.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's up to you. You don't have to have.
So if we waive the hearing, which we can discuss.
You're putting on the next meeting for a Bible conditional approval.
Next month?
Yeah.
Right.
They would still have to meet all the conditions of approval.
Yes.
But it'd be up to the board.
Yeah, yeah.
It's your discretion whether to hold a hearing or not.
Fair enough, okay. And that's what you're asking for, I think, is.
Yes, I don't think we held, we held a hearing on, um, the one behind, um, was, not there, it was the, to the garage that got converted, just, just past, um.
Sage and Madison.
Excuse me?
Sage and Madison.
No, no, it's going, just past, going north of the American Hotel.
Oh, oh, over there?
Rocky Camoros's building.
Oh, okay, okay.
Building in the back that converted.
Right, right. Well, I don't believe anyone has come to, from, in this, these meetings, this planning board meeting, to speak to this so far.
We haven't received any correspondence.
I haven't heard anything. I haven't heard, received any correspondence, no one in the, in the audience. Do you folks have any, any, on the board have any particular interest in having a public hearing?
No.
Right.
It's longer than that.
Right, yeah, fine. Do we need to take a vote on that list too, in, in terms of, essentially?
It's not required, so.
No, you, you just adjourn it next, for the next meeting, in the, for the final.
Right.
And that's what we'll do. That's what we'll do.
And we have a clear list of the conditions that need to be put together.
Yeah, it'll have to be written up and adopted for the next meeting.
Right.
Right, have it in front of you, so you can't do it now.
Yeah.
Fine.
But I just meant in terms of making sure we knew everything, so we weren't back here in a month finding new things, that was all.
Right, no, there, there, it really is.
The sidewalks, the capacity and the ADA.
Yep.
Well, then, if that's, if that's the case, I would accept a motion to, to table this till next month for a meeting for conditional approval.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I see you unanimous, and thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to see you, and, and good luck with it. See you next month. Okay.
The record of the next meeting is June twenty fifth.
Right. Welcome back, Ron.
Thanks, thank you.
Next up is number three, Page Main LLC, Page Restaurants.
Larry's home.
Right, Larry Pray is going to be recusing himself today, so he's leaving the room. And I'm actually going to, to read a statement to the, to the board, to the public about this particular application. And I'm going to do that now. The planning board is in receipt of a letter from the applicant, Joseph Traina, of Traina Companies, owner of Page Restaurant. He has asked that I recuse myself from further involvement with this application to quote, "due to the argumentative nature and lack of understanding, of understanding by the chairperson," end quote. After many months reviewing and debating various aspects of this application, both the applicant and the planning board are experiencing frustration. That is not unusual. Nevertheless, I have given the applicant's request serious consideration. I have carefully reviewed, reviewed the stenographer's minutes of the meeting, and consulted with our village attorney regarding our ethics code. That's chapter twenty-five of Village Code. I harbor zero bias against this applicant. I seek to follow the laws of this village as enumerated in Village Code, and to ensure the village planning board performs its duties and obligations fully and fairly. This has always been my sole interest and shall continue to be. With no bias against this applicant, and with a vow to this village to serve fairly as chair of the planning board, I decline to reclusive, recuse myself from this, uh, from this application. Thank you. And we have Ms. Carlotta in front of us here, from the, representing Page. Welcome. We have received, I'm thinking, I think you, Kathy, put together a, a memo to sort of summarize where we're at with Page. Do you want to look at that, or talk us through that a little bit? That'd be great.
As you know, we did a presentation conference for this application, and a pre-submission conference report was adopted by this board on January twenty fourth of this year. And it gave next steps and requirements and items that the planning board wished the applicant to address in their application. And included, putting in that was to identify seating associated with that page, because that is something that was discussed. And the planning board received a modified site plan on April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, which was less than the February first of twenty twenty-four. And that was the date on the plan. I don't know if that was the actual date that the, the changes were made, but there were some items that they showed. An, an area in that page that appears to be couches and chairs, you have the chairs and couches, with a note that specifies that the seating is in compliance with the, well, I'm not going to, I'll say verbatim, the seating is in compliance with the five, twenty-six, fifteen site plan modification, and is without table service, no limit on number of seats. So based on the review of what the current application is, which is to create additional seating area, which is thirty-nine seats, upstairs, and to replace the apartment, the main issue is related to the intensification of use and looking at the, the whole picture. So a part of, it kind of goes, it gets complicated, because in two thousand fourteen, there was a change in the code that changed the parking requirement for restaurants. It used to be one for the three, for every seat, three seats. And it was revised to be one for every four seats. So that opened up an opportunity to, for restaurants to increase the number of seats. And in two thousand fifteen, when the planning board approved that page, actually modified to, it was two thousand thirteen, modified, it, it appears, and that's, that's our, that's our interpretation, to have utilized the, that, that allowance for the additional seating. And, but however, there was nothing in, in the, in the decision, except for a, there was a item under findings of fact that says that the, and it was quoted, "The applicant does not believe the required off-street parking for the additional seats will be problematic due to the change in the village code of September twenty fourteen, permitting four restaurant seats as opposed to three for each parking spot, either present on the subject property or attributed to the restaurant due to grandfathered seating that's permitted under the certificate occupancy without off-street parking, because such seating predates the enactment of zoning." So that's that, that prior decision, it doesn't require parking related to that page. Those parking requirements were not shown on the plan that was approved. There's just some question, and I, you know, our deal is that this, and there was an allowance to, to have that page that, you know, accounted for that change in the code. However, that, like I said, that was not on the, on the plans or in the decision. So the thought is, and that was the request, was to have the applicant show what the parking requirements would be related to that page. And there's different ways that that could be calculated. This is a different, it's a unique area, it's a waiting area, but it does have occupancy related to it. So the thought was to use occupancy, which there is a standard for cars based on occupancy. And then there are, then there's the, uh, parking related to restaurant seats. So, um, however, it's, you know, whatever makes sense. We did get some occupancy numbers from the village fire marshal, but, you know, they didn't want to do the calculations, but, you know, we did, we did understand to, to look, and, you know, it does, it does generate need for parking, in our opinion. So that is the, the lead of the request. There are certain other things in the pre-submission conference report that were not included in this pre-submission that are less of the issue. So, um, with respect to SECPRA, um, this, the thirty days for the lead agency coordination had already passed.
Yep.
And so there is the opportunity for the, for to assume lead agency under SECPRA, but this would be incomplete to evaluate under SECPRA, because we're missing information about, you know, really only factors related to parking and potential traffic impacts during events.
Okay, okay. So we could, if I'm understanding you, on, on the last bit you just mentioned, the, the, we could vote on a resolution assuming lead agency this evening regarding SECPRA, but deem incomplete. Deem it incomplete for purposes of concluding the SECPRA process. Yeah, okay, right. Do you folks have any questions on, for her?
I think the memo is, is clear, and it's, uh, it's precise, and I think it was, it was a good job. So I think we should just move on recommendations that have been stipulated within the memo.
Wait, I'd be happy, yeah, can I speak on this?
Yeah, yeah, no.
I have a lot to say, but I apologize. It took me for a lot of thirty-six week old streets we toured. So I don't necessarily agree with the memorandum that's put forth by the board, and I think that's probably part of the reason why my client was upset and asked for John to recuse himself. I, I, this was sort of, and I, I don't know where this is coming from, this whole parking and going back to a two thousand, actually a two thousand and thirteen decision, because two thousand and thirteen is when the seats were actually approved. Two thousand and fourteen, code was changed, and then in two thousand and fifteen, the modification occurred. So for purposes of timing, Kathy's timeline is quite, doesn't quite line up, because the parking change, the change in the parking code occurred in two thousand and fourteen. And two thousand and thirteen is when the first modification, when the first site plan approval for those back seats, what were back waiting area, was first approved. So I'll just start with that. The second part of this is that when you commit and receive site plan approval from a board, and you go and get a certificate of occupancy, there's some anticipation that you're going to be able to rely on that certificate of occupancy moving forward, and that a future board, when you go in to get approval for something else, isn't going to say, oh, wait a second, I don't think they did that right. I'm going to go back and try to dig that back up, and try to rehash all of those issues and address the things we think they made a mistake about back in two thousand thirteen or two thousand fifteen. The reality of that is a little bit different. I did spend some time talking to the prior, and this happens in villages, because we have a lot of turnover. I did spend some time talking to the prior village attorney, who handled this, Darren, while it was before this board in various states of litigation over the years, as well as to Tom Priato, who was the former building inspector. Both of them at least let me know that they would be willing to write a letter to the board to indicate how this approval occurred. My understanding, and this is my understanding from the client, it's unfortunate that none of this was ever been put in writing, but that in fact, it was sort of a settlement to, well, the nineteen eighty-three action and Article seventy-eight that had been pending for quite a long time. And there are emails that go back and forth between Tom Priato and Denise Sharon, which I, I'm not privy to, it's obviously the villages. But I do believe that they indicate what the intent of that approval was and how they got to that approval. So I think it's incumbent on the board members, planning staff, and village attorney, I know it was somewhat advised to them, to go back and look into the history of how we got here. Because, A, going back and reopening a determination for which we proceed to C O, that means anybody can go back to a determination and reopen it when we commit for a different approval and say, oh, wait a second, we made a mistake back there. We should have required parking variances, we should have done W, X, Y, and Z, and we're going to do it now. That being said about that, and if I could just address the, what we're actually here for. And I think that's where a lot of the confusion really lies from. When the seating change, when the code for parking changed in the village, the building inspector at that time was Tom Priato, he made a determination that to increase your seating, you did not have to go to the planning board to see a site plan. So I made many applications for send, other restaurants, I, I sent one of them to Liz, and you have to, I have to find them. Just keep in mind that I only got this last week, it was last Thursday, and I was invited for the weekend. So I had to do a little more research and find those, but those were all done administratively. There were, there was no site plan review required. So once the building inspector has made such a determination, the villages sort of stuck with that determination, and those changes were made administratively. So I'm not here asking, I'm not required to obtain site plan approval for the seating itself. I'm here for a change of use for the second story. So very theoretically speaking, I can say, I'm going to amend this application. I'm not going to talk to you at all about seating. I'd actually just like to move four chairs, one table, from downstairs at Page using a hundred and twenty-four seats, keep a hundred and twenty downstairs and move four upstairs. Put a new kitchen up there, four chairs. I write a letter to the building inspector. That's how the seating increases, just by, by action of the building inspector. So I'm not here asking you for seating, I'm only here asking for the change of use. And so I think we have two different issues. One is the old approval, but I don't believe legally we can go back and revisit, but I didn't have time to draft a memo, I will do that for you. And I, like I said, I believe that the timeline that has been laid out is somewhat inaccurate for purposes of trying to get there. And I think that's where the client became concerned, because this memorandum was drafted by planning staff, I think, at the chairman's behest, and headed in a direction that I think was not correct. And, and so I don't believe that we need to revisit parking at this point. I'd ask that planning staff in the village go back and revisit history and figure out how this happened. I mean, I can tell you, but I, I know you don't believe me. And if you'd like, as I said, I can get letters from both the past village attorney and the past building inspector as to why this occurred, how it got here, and why the approval did read the way it was. So I believe there's both a legal obligation, a legal impediment to reopening an old approval, as well as some history that needs to be revisited, I think, by the board in order to clearly understand how the village has worked and, and, you know, whether it was right or not that they issued, you know, new such impetus of occupancy to every restaurant in town without making the site plan review. I think the discussion at that point in time was really about, is it requiring more parking? The answer is no, because the village already dealt with that. You know, so they just decided, you know, submitted updated survey certificate, which I did, with a letter and a, a floor plan, an existing floor plan and a proposed floor plan, and it was approved and C O was issued. So as I said, you know, from, in my mind, as I think about it, there's sort of a workaround for this issue. But we chose not to do it that way, but just, I want the board to keep in mind that we're not necessarily here for seating and, uh, an analysis of the seating as it relates to parking, particularly as it relates to an old approval. But with respect to proposed thirty-nine seats on the second story, those are seats that are approved administratively, not by the support.
Okay.
Can I?
So I would just say first, the chairman did request this memo specifically, that this is a function of planning review, that every time we come back, Kathy's really writing a new memo for all stuff re-education. And, and sort of, it's, it's a matter of researching. The history of this application has been difficult to research from the very beginning with the presentation that there was a settlement. I was looking for a settlement, I recall, for at least a couple of months. And I found a decision that was actually upholding the planning board's determination, dismissing an Article seventy-eight petition instead of a settlement, and we talked about that. So it's been a, a little bit of a history with respect to this application, and it, and the memos are coming as more is revealed to Kathy Eisen's office and my meeting. So that's where that is originating. No doubt, there's a lot of confusion about the past history of this property and how we got here. And I think it bears for all of us to sit back and sort of look at it again, and make sure we understand what it is that brought to me here, how we got here, and how we move forward.
I'm just going to make a comment, because you always can stop me on this, but if I were, if I were reviewing this for a client, and they wanted to add space to a restaurant, and there was already a determination on the amount of seating that was available within the, the restaurant, and on this, in this case, we'll assume that all that seating was including the back page piece and the front, that if we're going to add square footage or, or serving area to the restaurant, that that would change the entire establishment's ratio of seating available based on either tables, square footage, egress sensibility, parking, depending on where you are and what ordinance is your.
I, 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 I get your point, but A, that page does not, you know, are not considered restaurant seats. And there, there is an email from Tom Priato that's very clear, that these are not restaurant seats, they are waiting to take seats. So not to be included in a parking calculation.
Yeah.
I, as I said, there is a legal impediment to going back and reopening an old approval, because you think they didn't do it right the first time.
It's, it's not about that. It's, you're changing, you're changing the amount of floor area that you're serving, right?
But I understand that that area traditionally has not been overseen by this board. So that area has been seen, so those expansive expansions of areas and things like that, other than, because I need a change of use, most of the restaurants honestly had space enough to add the additional seating in their existing space, and all we had to do was rearrange the table. to add the additional seating in their existing space, and all we had to do was rearrange tables and chairs. Sometimes we had to take out walls and do other minor, you know, minor work interior in order to get the seating to fit, but that's the way it worked. It did not go through this board for review with respect to parking or. Because there was no parking required, there would be no reason for it to have had to come back.
I I I think that the application, I mean, this is my opinion, my wish to stop, but the application before us. Is in addition of the serving space or restaurant space. Which triggers the increase in the entire. Establishment. So in that case, occupant load of the building as far as. Uh, patrons is going to increase.
But our occupant, your fire rated occupancy is different from your seating.
I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about the fire rating.
No, I understand, but your seat, I understand that your seating is it. You're going to increase the number of seats, but there is no parking required, that decision was already made by the village board trustees in two thousand and fourteen.
No, and I think, I think what the issue is, is that because of that, it triggers this whole analysis of the entire establishment on seating.
And it it triggers it for the purposes of SECR, which does require that you consider the entire impact of the development, not just, um. It doesn't require that you just parse out what's immediately before the board, you came to this board for site plan review, therefore, when you come to this board for site plan review, the board does get to open the entire site for purposes of looking at all the elements of site plan review that are listed in the code. Including parking, traffic, circulation, you know, you know them all. And also for the purposes of SECR, to consider the potential impacts of those changes on the environment. And that's for the entire site, what it will result in, including past and 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 present approvals. That's. That's absolutely.
Right.
As I said, I can get the board a memo with respect to. Um. Reliance on a fire approval. If we didn't, if, you know, I don't know what else you could rely on, if you could not rely on a certificate of occupancy, I don't know.
But the, but the village, there's no vested rights and any permits issued in error, ever. So if it's determined that this was all done in error, you do have an absolute right to correct your status as a village, as a municipality, as you know. At, after a public hearing and a process, correct, to rescind a C O, if you're going to rescind a C O, right?
So.
But I I. I always say, but I'm not, I'm not a attorney, but I would actually see this as a change in occupancy. Not occupancy certificate. So I, you know, I've done projects all over New York City, other areas, and I've never been sitting someplace where somebody's told me that. You know, I can add this space and it doesn't affect anything else in the, so in the building.
It's a new, it's a new parking space, you you have to.
Well, that, that's a different issue.
The only time this ever happens is if you're like in a mall or someplace and there's a designated tenant space. You know, this is a building, you you, the client occupies the entire building or owns the entire property, so. In this case, this addition to the restaurant, in this case. Triggers a review of the entire space as far as. Occupant loads, seating capacities, and then in this village, we have this whole thing with the parking, so then it triggers this parking count.
It may be that, you know, you've talked to the prior building inspector and he gives you this information for the board, and what the board will consider it.
I mean, that that was a determination made by Tom Priata, long before. Probably when you were here.
Yeah, no, I don't know.
And tha- and that's the way the process has been run through all these years, so as I said, you know, my workaround for this is to ask you for four seats upstairs. A hundred and twenty downstairs, four upstairs. And to do the process the same way that. It's been done in the past. I I'm I'm operating within the the confines of what's been happening in the village and the way the village is operated.
Yeah, I mean, we can.
It's not that I didn't want to be just, I I didn't want to be tricky and, you know, do it that way, but
I don't want to get involved with that.
That really is an option for us, I, like I said, I'm willing to go back and speak with the applicant about all of the things that we've talked about tonight. Um, I I don't see them very willing to go and get a parking variance because I I suspect that's going to be very difficult. Uh, particularly for an old approval. Uh. So I I. Chance, you know, I I can go back and speak with them, that's the most I can operate at this point. But understand that I I think there are some impediments to reviewing. Prior approvals and reopening old approvals because you think they didn't do it right the first time.
I mean, I don't know that that's the case, but I think that for secret purposes, you have a problem, this is a type one action. Um, and so this board does have to go through the secret process. And consider the impacts of the entire development on the process, on on the, you know, on the work. Through, by going through the secret process itself. Um, and I don't think you can avoid that by just. Going back to the department, but that being said, you know. We can revisit this. Of course.
I I.
You can use for the rest.
Yeah, no, and I, I, right, I'd like the boards to, yeah, and the village to look at their own reference, and I mean, if you want to, she can make the phone call to Liz.
Yeah, we can do that.
Is still paying all to the prior council.
I did call her, I called Denise today, um, she was in court, so she couldn't get back to me.
Yeah, I I think the memo was very well written and that we follow the recommendations in in the, in the memo. I don't see a reason why we can't get past it.
Well, you you should still, I still recommend that the board proceed with the resolution to adopt lead agency and start and keep.
Yeah.
Over with that process.
Yeah, I I would agree.
Okay.
That's what's before the board tonight, so, but these these other issues, we're going to have to, we'll get some fire through them eventually, but they're, they're not easy issues to work through eventually, for for all that.
Okay. Okay. Okay, well, it seems there is, there's agreement that we should probably move forward on the, on the resolutions this evening.
On the resolution. Just to facilitate.
So. On that case, if there's agreement on that.
Yes.
Um, that I have a resolution in front of me, um, I would, I I assume you've all seen it as well. I'll accept a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Very good, so this is a resolution assuming lead agency and deeming incomplete for the purposes of concluding the secret process.
Yes.
Good. Okay, thank you very much.
Is it table till next month?
Yes.
Tabled until next month, thank you very much. Good, thank you all. Okay. We will move on to number four, which is two zero one Main Street. John Germain Memorial Library. Um. And we are discussing, oh, welcome back, Larry.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I didn't forget you, I just missed you, yes.
Didn't ask for me.
I, we were asking for you. Uh, okay, so Ron, to the, to John Germain Memorial Library. Um, it's discussed completeness of site plan application. Um, you all remember this, the uh, the library, I don't know how many months, it was ago, maybe two months ago or so, uh, Ms. Gallo, we. It was, it was a last minute sort of phone calls and emails saying, please, we have an emergency situation, we have a discussion item in front of the planning board, literally half an hour later, we had a meeting and and Ms. Gallo came in front of us, and that's how we first heard about this. Um, so that that was, that was the beginning of of this conversation, so it's been, I think it's been two months or something like that, since then. Right, and the application has now formally been submitted, that's correct. Um, and we're here to discuss the completeness of it. Uh, or lack thereof, um, and so, um. There is, there were. I, there there were engineering reports submitted as part of the application. Um, a letter, or more than one letter perhaps, submitted. Um. And if you'd like to, if you'd like to say a few things, you're welcome to.
Um, I, I know that there are questions with regard to what type of systems have been evaluated, so I did make sure that we did have Bob Prover here from Lizardo's Engineering to answer any of the board's questions with respect to. Systems and why they were not going to be an option for the library. Uh, I also have with me here, uh, the executive director of the library, Kelly Harris, and she probably wants to speak with you as well, but I'll let Robert do the the engineering, the difficult parts of it.
Great.
Leave all the questions down there, so answer whatever you have.
Okay. Um, with the system that's in place, they have an open loop system and it's failing for their heating system. And, uh. If you notice in the report that was written. Uh, putting in a new well for it, uh, would not work. It's not recommended, it's just going to have the same problem. Uh, the recommendation from, uh, somebody asked if we could put in a closed loop system. Um, but the, uh, the library does not have enough room to put in a closed loop system for the, uh. Uh, the tasks that they're looking to put in. On that site, they would need over ten thousand square feet of open area for that. I hope I said that right, my, uh, my engineer is not there, but I am an architect working with him.
Well, that's, that's, that's because you're talking about a horizontal closed loop, not a vertical closed loop, right? It sounds to me like you're talking about horizontal closed loops and not vertical.
I, that's probably correct. I would have to talk to my partner on that.
So it it's possible to do vertical closed loop systems, and there's probably, probably, um. They can probably come up with a way to use the existing wells. Maybe have to dig another, you know, put another well or two in, but, um, if they're vertical, it shouldn't be an issue. I don't know, I'm not an engineer, I'm just saying, based on what I've read in the reports and what I know.
Um, I'd, I'd have to talk to him on that, I apologize. He's actually in flight today, or he would have actually attended the meeting. Um, he did write the report.
Uh, sir, for clarity, can can you, can, I have to back up a little bit, did you tell me that you're an architect at the firm and he's, you're referring to the gentleman who is the?
The engineer, that's correct.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Can you just say your name, please?
Sure, it's Robert Druckter, D R U C T O R.
Um, Robert, I'll, I'll ask you a question, um.
Sure.
So the, 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 you you folks wrote a report that's dating back to twenty twenty two, I think. Um, if I remember correctly, um, and it's, it's volumous, there are multiple, multiple pages, so there's quite a bit in there. And there's another engineering firm that did some also similar work, or maybe it's complimentary. Um, but there was no mention in that report. Uh, the, the, what was mentioned as as possible solutions to the problem. Uh, there were a couple of different possibilities, one was to. Uh, fix what's there. Um, and that you referenced that a little bit by saying those wells, those particular wells that exist now, closed, open loop. Open loop system, uh, well, you know, we can't fix it.
From, from what my partner had told me on that, and again, I'm not as familiar, uh, with the mechanical system. He had said it would create, it would, uh, provide a temporary solution. But it would just go back to the problem that is occurring currently.
Understood. Um, so thus, the the contemplation, I think, which is what Ron's talking about, maybe going to a different type of system. Um, but also you, um, what was. Considered in the, in one of the engineering reports, and forgive me for not remembering if it was yours or the other firm, was putting something on the roof. Um.
We had looked at that, and we were going to put up some barriers around that, but that would, uh. Really become visible because of the height of the equipment and everything, and it would take away from the, uh, the facade of the building. The view that you would be seeing. I mean, the library is a beautiful building and artistic, and you you look at it from, uh. Many pictures of it with the lighting and everything else, and I think it would really take away from the the view that you would see there. With having equipment that's up on top and then putting some screening in.
I I think that, I think the issue we're having is that, uh, this library is a historic landmark, Sag Harbor. And the proposed location is, uh. It's, is, I mean, in my opinion, was really, it's unacceptable for the landmark of the building it is. And I think we all want to, we want to solve, help solve this problem that we're having with the library. But to just put a big screened unit in front of the main. Corner of that building is, um. Troublesome, and 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 we're just talking about the planning board, I'm not, you know, you have to be before the.
Architectural Review Board.
And I don't know how that's going to carry.
We're going to just have Mrs. Harris, I think she can tell you a little bit about the history of this process, why, why you see things from twenty twenty two.
Okay.
Please, pause.
So, hi.
Hi.
Kelly Harris, uh, I'm the executive director, John Germain, two O one Main Street. I'm in Sag Harbor.
Good to have you here.
Thank you, and, um, let's see, I walked in the door as the library director in two thousand and twenty two. Um, with a system that was failing, and so the goal of this board, um, my board was to try to get the system into a state of good repair, this is actually my second geothermal system at a library. That was an open loop that has failed, so I feel like I have a career at some point.
It's not your fault, don't worry, it's not your fault.
Something cool, like challenges, but it's H VAC, right? So the first goal was, let's get this into a state of good repair. So we brought in P W Roser, we looked at our equipment, we looked at our wells, we looked at the airflow, we had the entire system balanced, we did everything that we could to get this system to a state of good repair, and we were unable to do it. So that's why we brought in, uh, Roser, and Roser said, your water is some of the slimiest process water that they've ever seen. Um, slimy being my words, not theirs, they have a very nice, you know, scientific term for that. Um, and so they basically said, look, you're on a postage stamp, you're on a postage stamp with a ton of stuff in the ground already. So you have no choice. But to run the system into the ground and not have HVAC anymore, so no heating, no cooling. You can try to start digging holes to see if you can find clean water. But we don't believe you're going to be able to do it, you're still going to have this biofilm issue, and if it's not right away. It will arise again very quickly. Um, or you can move to a more traditional type of H V A C, which is what we have come to you today with. Um, there was discussion about putting it on the roof, it is my understanding, I know Patrick's not here, he's on a plane, he's our engineer. If it was on the roof, it would be incredibly difficult for it to be maintained because of the roof lines. There would be additional supports that would have to go in, we would have to close the library to repipe everything from the roof all the way down into our lower level. Um, and it would be very ugly, very expensive, and also louder on the roof for our neighbors than if we put it on a pad with proper sound attenuation and as many trees as you guys want all the way around it. Um, our goal has always been to be good neighbors. We're librarians, we do our due diligence, um, and we did not want to come to you without exploring every possible option to not put a giant piece of equipment on our lawn. But we've run out of options, my building today does not have cooling in it because our system continues to fail. There are our HVAC guys, like, you know, they they need to rename their property, they're the MacGyvers, they come in and they're like. We've got a paperclip and a piece of gum, and we're going to try this and see if it works until it doesn't work. Our wells, our diffusion wells, no longer diffuse. Um, I've been there for two and a half years, we've had them cleaned three times to the tune of forty thousand dollars every time I have to get them scrubbed. I got them scrubbed in March and our well guys were like, when are you guys giving up on this? We've really hit a point where we have no other options, and we are just literally pouring hundreds of thousands of dollars into a hole in the ground. Um, during the time with which that twenty twenty engineering report went forward. One of our source wells ended up collapsing, so we only have one source well right now, which is not technically enough water to adequately run through our system if we were to have a really cold snap or a really hot snap. Um, we have climate controlled archives, which has just priceless, like irreplaceable items of Sag Harbor history that we are now worried about getting moldy because of the humidity that's being introduced into that area. We're worried about it deteriorating faster because of the heat of that room right now. And so we come to you today to say, we understand that it's ugly. We are going to make it as pretty as humanly possible, we understand that we are a historic building, but we also understand that we serve this community as as a, as a respite for people, as a place for them to be. As a place for people who are maybe housing insecure to be warm in the winter and cool in the summer, not today, not, you know, until, till we we get this fixed. And so when we come to you today and say, this is the best possible option that we have. It's the best possible option that we have, we have looked at all the other scenarios. And this piece of equipment that we need is expensive, and it takes twenty six weeks for them to build this. And so we don't want, we can't put this in in the dead of winter, we certainly don't want to put it in during the summer. And so we don't want, we can't put this in in the dead of winter, we certainly don't wanna put it in during the summer. Um, for anyone, because that would be terrible, right, uh, for our neighbors, for our community, it's summer reading season. Um, so we really need to hit that sweet spot of fall or spring to put this in, and at this point, it's falls off the table, so now we're looking at spring, and so we really do need to move as quickly as possible. Um, so we can get back to um the service of, of books and library programs and teaching literacy and protecting Sag Harbor's history.
Uh, you mentioned the, the um, um, precious documents, whatever, I, I forget what your phrase was. Uh, the, so, so that one system does the entire building, including those areas, it's not like a separate
Yeah.
thing.
Yeah.
It supports the whole facility.
Yeah, okay, right, okay.
Don't anybody let you, let them recommend an open-loop system.
Yeah, I was just gonna say the advice. Was it so, what's a proximity? Was particularly troublesome, or just, they're just bad systems overall?
The problem is, open loops, is open loops are slightly more efficient than closed loops, and sometimes when buildings are designed, engineers will recommend an open loop for efficiency, but it doesn't uh
And possibly square footage.
Or whatever, they can destroy a system, you know.
And, and also, well, the island was, was basically created by glaciers, right? So the water you have here might not be the water that you have ten feet away, fifteen feet away. And so you could dig a test well and go, ooh, I think we're clean here, but when you dig where that actual well is, it could be completely different.
I, I spent about two hours reading the reports today, with, not all the tables, mind you, but I read the reports and it's fairly clear that both biological contamination and corrosion are destroying the system, have destroyed the system. No matter how many things you're gonna do to remediate this, it's not gonna work. That's what you're telling me, that's what I got from the report. And you could drill another well, and it's gonna have almost the same, same water, virtually the same water, it doesn't matter. Uh, they're high in, i- i- not initially, but eventually they're high in iron, iron manganese, those are corrosive. Uh, that's why, when you have well water, your, why your toilets are red, same reason. And uh, I think that the only question is Rob's question. What about it, you, your question was, what about a closed-loop system that's vertical? And unfortunately, we don't have, we have the ar- our architect and not the engineer to answer that question. Sorry, that don't mean any disrespect, but uh
None taken.
I think that that question just needs to be answered, because
It's my understanding that the amount of things that we have underground in our property, uh, Saptec, we're not on Village. Um, we have some other wells that, and due to where we are in terms of, of water level, that trying to go down vertically would not work either. Because again, um, you know, the goal of, of the library and, and my board of trustees has always been to try to stick with something like a geothermal, and we've been told it just cannot be done.
Well, I would, I would say they, they should take a really hard look at it, because they have existing wells dug. And there are possibilities of reusing those wells, but they'd have to pull those out and reuse the shafts for closed loop. I've seen this done before, so I'm not, not saying, just not pulling that out of the air. So, but I, I don't know what the capacity is, so I don't know if they need like another, to do another vertical or another two vertical wells or something like that for, for, to make the system work. Because closed loop is slightly less efficient than open, so I don't, I don't know that answer without the engineers talking about it. Uh, and myself looking at it, I had two, two other options. One is that, uh, to consider is the current location you have it at, putting it in the ground. Making a backup and putting the system down, do not messing with the facade. And then on the other side of the building, and I don't know, because I don't know anything about the building, I haven't seen the drawings or anything on this thing, but if you go back to the, where the entry point is on the, where the child, the children's library is, that main entry, down on the court. Where that meeting room is on the backside, if there was extending that floor outward and putting the systems within that space, it's, it's below grade at that area. And that might be a possibility to put, you know, some things in those, I know, I think the welder on that side.
The sort of walls are on that side, the diffusion walls are on the other side.
Right.
So.
So that might be a possibility to look at, I'm, I'm just pulling these out thinking about it without having any.
So I think we sent us a letter um from Trane, the manufacturer of the equipment, explaining why it could not be vaulted into the ground as part of our application, did you receive that?
Yes.
I'm sorry, that noted because there wouldn't have, be enough ventilation around the equipment to, to work that way.
It needs to get, it needs to get rid of the heat with cooler air.
I, I don't know, I mean, I, I spent thirty years working in the city, and we do this in the city all the time, so I don't, I don't know if that's completely accurate. But um, you know, they can look at whatever the airflow and current, and how much grill H day we need on top to get the cooling system to work correctly. Uh, but on the other side, if you were to extend the bottom of that building slightly out, you probably have a grade level s- system, you know, enclosure there. So it's the equipment, because if I look at the equipment pad on the roof, it's in the diagram. It's not bad, right, that would probably fit exactly under there, setting that space over those wells on the corner side. And then it wouldn't be affecting the main building, which is the main facade of the building architecturally and historically, from, it's been like that from whenever this was built, nineteen hundred, nineteen seventy-five. And then preserving that, because I, I'm really concerned that you're gonna go before the historic review board, and they're just gonna be like, there's no way. And I think there's some off, you know, other areas to look at, and maybe they could do some, you know, alter, alternate locations or look at those.
So are you suggesting we get rid of our program room? Like our
No, 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 not the, no, no, no.
To extend it.
Extended.
To extend it, so you get
The courtyard, so.
Completely remove the courtyard.
No, no, you would, you would basically take that glass out of that end wall and extend that out this way, your courtyard would still remain the same, it's just that one corner of the right, you would come outward, and I'm sure the village has given, you know, you'll probably need to set back variants, so I'm sure that, whatever. We'll do that, because it's, you know, it's required to make this happen. And you would have that, and then if they really wanted to do something else, architecturally, you could do something upstairs on the roof layer or something. So.
Pardon me, you.
And I'm not the architect, I'm not designing this, I'm just
You mentioned that, uh, there's a twenty-six week period, it's good, requires twenty-six weeks to build out. What's being?
Yeah.
That's the equipment cost, the equipment costs and timeframe for them to build the equipment.
Right.
Uh, to build the equipment, not to install.
No, it's the lead time.
It's the lead time. And so it's either, it theoretically would either be installed in the fall before the winter or next spring. Those are the two periods of time, and fall is already approaching, so. Um, what's the, what's then the drop dead date for spring installation?
Twenty-six, it's, it's June, right?
Right, but you wouldn't
Half the year.
You wouldn't get anywhere near A R B by then, I mean, never mind us, right? So that's not a realistic date.
Right, I don't know that we're worried about the A R B, I mean, you know, the application, as we've said, it, it sort of is what it is, and if we don't have any other options, then we're gonna have to work with that, maybe heating and cooling system, so I, if we get through this with you guys. You know, the A R B is just gonna kind of, we'll, we'll deal with whatever they wanna have around it and everything else, but I
I mean, personally, I would take a look at that one area, because that way you're not affecting the historic building, you're only impacting newer building. And you already have a flat platform there for it, and it's, and it's just taking that corner out over there. So I, I would, I would seriously take a look at that, have the architects and engineers take a look at that.
Right, see truly, this, the next step sort of deemed a complete set of public hearing, right, Kathy? I wanted to speak with the board about scheduling a public hearing, because we did request a waiver of a public hearing. In this instance, it's not something that requires sanitary, it's not something that requires parking. Um, other than a very inappropriate amount of the village board member, um, there has not been any significant public interest. You know, I, I think we talked, we talk about this at every board meeting, once a month, we talk about this project. You know, like, um, we, we, when people come in and they're like, there's something wrong with the building, we talk about this project. Um, and not one person has said anything to me other than, shixi. Um, and so, you know, it's, it's hard to say that there's public interest in it when we have library, public board meetings, um, that are available to attend via Zoom. And uh, we have nobody who has come to raise any concerns about that.
Yeah, I'm actually okay with it being an emergency situation, right, so that not, you know, we can, if we have agreement of moving this forward, as long as we can come up with some solution that makes sense for this. Because I don't think, I mean, for me personally, I don't think that putting it on that side, other side of the building where it's been recommended is the solution. So I, I think, but it is an emergency, you do need to get this thing fixed. And uh, so we should help out whatever, whichever way we can, pushing it forward.
Can I just ask a question, wait, and maybe the architect can answer, would the equipment be the same regardless of where you're placing on the property?
Yes. If, if you're stuck with the same footprint, would be the same, no matter where you went.
Right, so it, it seems, and Ron's kinda saying this as well, like, maybe that, you can push forward with getting that process started. If, if there's a board agreement, and then you can, we can address where it's gonna be.
Right.
You know, like, get it, get it ordered, if, if that's something that the board wants.
That's an interesting point.
Yeah, as long as the design doesn't disrupt them though, I mean, if it ends up somewhere else.
Right, I'll need a reconfiguration.
In some way.
Right, because I, I can tell you this right now, if I look at this, and I look at the amount of space that you need here, it well fits within this, this zone.
Have you evaluated by architects and engineers to be sure that it actually works?
That's what I'm saying, but if you look at the square footage of space you have here, it's this building compared to what they're showing here, you have plenty of room here. And in this way, you're already, you're only impacting the new, modern piece of the building, not the historic corner front of the building. And I don't know where the mechanical is, but I imagine because the wells are here, this is probably closer to whatever your service
To the other side of the building.
Than over here, so that's why this is here.
Yes.
Because then you have to go through here, okay, so.
We did originally look at that side of the building as well, and we thought it would be more disruptive to the operations and everything that's going on, on that side of the building. But we, I mean, if you agree with the equipment, we'll look at it again, but
Yeah, because this thing is, I mean, even, even probably take up all of this, maybe only half of that.
I think we were also concerned about the equipment being disruptive to
The people, what's going on over on that side of the field, correct?
What does go on on that side of the building?
Well, that is where our courtyard is, so we do use that outside space for summer programming. Uh, sometimes we have concerts out there, we have children's programs out there. Um, people come to work on their laptops out there in the courtyard, it's really a, a beautiful restful space for people to work. Um, and then enjoy the library.
And that was the reason we moved it to the other side.
Yeah, well, I
I think it would be helpful to see the alternatives.
You can run the lines back here, you have a retaining wall, you have space here to run this to wherever this location is back here. If, if I can just add, I would recommend that, but I'm, you know, that's, that's just my recommendations.
Um, regarding public hearings, um, and public interest. It, it was noted earlier, and the first time, actually, this is a historic building, in a historic district, it's a landmark building. So it would be, and it's, it's, we, we are, we, if we, if we as a board are interested in historic preservation and, and landmark issues, it would be really important for, to give the opportunity to the public to weigh in, should they want to. Um, so I'm, I'm hesitant, I'm really hesitant to not allow public, public information, to public to come in if they should want to. Um, so I, I think more public input is better than none. Um, and, and, and just because it is a landmark building, it's particularly, I'm particularly sensitive about it, and I, I think anyone else who values that, that aspect of the village feels the same.
But John, if they can look at it over here, that's not impacting the historic piece of the building. So if they was able to move this, the, the location where the newer
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And it really isn't impacting the historic piece, and maybe that's the way to get around.
No, it's, it, what's, it's impacting is the use of the building.
Yeah.
The u- the programming. Which is that, which is really, excuse me, sorry, John.
Yep.
It's a really interesting question, because uh, what are we trying to make work? The library or just the history? Which, I live in a historic house, I love it, I love being in this village, it's an amazing place. And historic preservation is very important, but it's, we've got, one is a living, breathing thing, and another is a historic thing in there. And we're now being, putting them into conflict, but the equipment is the same equipment.
Can I circle back to, to an earlier iteration, and just to put, put my mind at rest, and I'm not sure we can actually put it at rest entirely without the engineer here. But um, on the roof of a building, I know, I know you mentioned that it was considered, it was, it was part of one of the proposals. It, you know, um, at one point, it was considered a pro- a proper proposal. Um, it sounds like at some point for, uh, uh, you guys moved away from that. Um, maybe because of cost, maybe because of maintenance issues, or all of the above.
Same thing. It would be incredibly difficult and dangerous once they put the equipment up and the appropriate sound attenuating panels for anybody to get up there and maintain. At that, I don't know that anybody would, would want to. Uh, plus, the costs would be um, would, would be crazy um for us to do it, we'd have to close the library. We'd have to close um the street, there would be a lot of crane work. Uh, we'd also have to make sure that the building was uh structurally sound enough to, to have that weight. Um, which we had structural issues uh with the renovation and expansion project uh over there. So there was concern about, could it take the load? But then also, by the time you put up the sound fencing and everything else, um, you have to, you have to be a very skinny, tiny, small person with very good balance to be able to maintain the equipment.
Okay.
And you probably don't have any access to the roof currently, right?
We do.
You do have stair access?
Uh, it's, it's a ladder, that's
Pull down ladder.
Yeah, um, and even getting up there is a little precarious, if you step too far, you can
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, that would really fly current, today's current code, the way it's sold. No, definitely not ocean.
I don't think anybody would want it, I don't think anybody would be willing to to
Yeah, af- after looking at it, when we did the analysis of it, that's why it went down on the ground, just made a lot more sense. Uh, we did look at the other side, like you said, it just took away from the operations. So now you're weighing, you're back to the, the two choices you had. Either you're taking away from operations of a library or the historic look. You know, we're trying to put, we're trying to do it with um, putting trees and plants around it to not make it as noticeable. Um, well, while maintaining the, the current and operations of the, uh, the building.
I mean, I think some of the issue is, I mean, I know it's an emergency, but we got it as a tiny discussion point, the meeting before last. We only got something on the last meeting, um, I tend, you know, I can't help but agree with John, and the public might not have come to your board meetings, but they The public might not have come to your board meetings, but they might also not have known existed. Um, and so not having the public be able to weigh in on it does seem a slightly difficult situation. But if Drew's suggestion could solve for some of that time issue, because obviously we're enormously sympathetic to that, right? The, the library needs to be heated, the documents need to be saved, you know, you're an absolute treasure to Sag Harbor. Right? So, you know, is there, is there a way we can help manage that a little bit? Where you can, you know, go with Drew's suggestions, if the engineer is comfortable that the equipment doesn't change. Um, you know, and, and get that underway, and then we work as fast as we can to get you through these other steps and just, you know, look at potential other locations and, and things, and, cause I think that probably is a important thing for a lot of village residents.
Have you guys discussed putting a temporary heating, uh, trailer next to the building, heating and cooling?
We have, uh, we, we have not had to do it yet, so, but it's something that's coming down the pipe, yeah.
It's been suggested. Yeah.
Cause at some point, they're gonna come to, you know, the archives are gonna come to us and say, we cannot service this any longer.
Right. I mean, that, that is an option in the meantime until everything, you know, cause if you're gonna.
People be upset.
Well, you know, it's gonna, some people may have to be upset for, you know, a few months, but.
Wow.
Uh, but at least the building is operational and it's keeping, it's maintaining the archives and, and we're coming up with a proper solution rather than rushing through something. Uh, so, you know, you can look at that. Um, yeah, but I have real issues with, like, if I look at every historic photo of this building. Never has that side of the building been obstructed by some other, you know, some other add-on that went through the building. So I, I think it, it's gonna be a hard sell to get that.
Actually, there, there's another piece of equipment that's right over on that side as well, that's been hidden behind, uh.
Yeah, I know, I, I know. Yeah, I know, and it's a B in some people's back end.
Okay.
So, that it sits there, but, uh.
The electrical thing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
It was probably PSC and you probably just put it there.
Right, right. Um, how can we move forward with this in some way, which is, which is helpful and satisfactory? Um, so, um, in order to have a public hearing, we need to have a, a better idea.
Set a public hearing date.
Right.
And we can get you that information, um, as we move forward, it can be part of the public hearing process, as further evaluations.
Yeah.
It would be, yes, it would be the same, you know, similar presentation at the next meeting, and then you can hear from the public.
Mm-hmm.
And then we could continue these discussions.
Yeah, even, even though we're not, we're not clear about whether it should be over here or be over there, the location, fine. Then I think that makes sense, if we're all in agreement on that. I'd, I'd love to have something scheduled, move this forward as quickly as possible.
Yeah, and if that gives you the opportunity to move ahead with the equipment decision, if the engineers.
That way we can move forward with both.
Yeah, it's a concurrent process then. Yeah.
Right, okay, then if I understand you correctly, we need to deem this complete?
Yes.
Um, and, and set a, a public hearing date for, hopefully for next month. Good. Okay, so then I would accept them, uh, uh, if someone is interested for a, um, for just that, for, um.
Let's do it.
So move, let's go. Very good, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for coming in, and really, and for all your work with the libraries. It's, it really is a treasure and, and we wanna help you, and, um, thank you for what you're doing.
Oh, thank you.
I, I'm sorry that you keep having these problems wherever you go.
No, it is, it is a treasure. My, my kids spent tons of time in that place, you know, when they were small, so.
Uh, good, thank you very much.
Yeah, John. The director, uh, if I'm able to change the application completely, setting up a public hearing. But maybe the most.
Yeah, yeah, most is, yes, the, the point is, is complete, and we're setting up the public hearing for next month. That's, that's correct. All right. Where are we? Um, oh, discussion item, wonderful. Um, nu- number three, discussion item of, uh, five Hampton Street, which is the Christ Episcopal Church. Um, discussion of a proposed renovation of access to existing parish hall to comply with ADA improvements to mitigate flooding issues and addition of signage and lighting. Come on up to the podium.
The architect is in the hallway.
Oh, that's okay.
Walking to the librarian.
Ah, okay, wonderful, well.
I will just, you know.
Come on up and view this, we'll, we'll have a little chat.
I'm Mother Broderick.
Hello, I'm John, nice to see you, Mother Broderick.
So, um, okay, so what we are proposing to do is make the two-story parish hall handicap accessible. We are heavily used by a range of community organizations. The members actually years ago stopped using the building, cause as is true for a lot of religious communities. Up there, a little older than I am, and so getting off the flight of stairs or going down is an impossibility.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know, did he give you all the pretty pictures?
We have some, we, I think we have some, yes.
So, um, so, um, Assemblyman Phil actually encouraged us to do this. Apparently years ago, the parent had received a state grant to make the building handicap accessible, but the parents, clergy person um, got the estimate after the grant was received, and it didn't match, so they didn't have the ability to pay for it. So he now has a cost estimate from the architect, he's in the hallway.
Uh, yes, that's fine.
Um, and we're working on actual bids from contractors to make sure they align. And also working on other grant sources to make sure we actually can spend all the money and then get it back in order to make the building more serviceable to the wider community.
Okay.
Hey, I'm gonna sit down now.
It was fun having you up here though, I, I enjoyed having you here.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just here.
Okay, um, hello sir, welcome. I hear you're the architect.
Yes.
Um, and I, I just need you, for you to state for the record, your name and your address.
Of course. My name's Bill Chalif, I'm with the Chalif and Rogers Architects in Watermill, this is fifty-second year.
That's something.
Yeah. I can feel every. I, I think what we're not to do here is, should be seen, we're looking at it as a general improvement to the block and, and, and maybe the region, right, right, around there. The building, the parish church was originally built and designed to be a public meeting. That was a public meeting room, uh, and I think, oh, this part. Um, one second, if I may.
Sure.
Yes.
No, thanks, go.
Uh, so we do, but the building is, uh, it's, it's, it's the nature of what it is, an institutional building. You know, I believe every building has an obligation to serve the public as best as, best as possible. So, uh, the immediate problem that we have i- is, is twofold. One is that the, uh, heavy rains that we've been experiencing, uh, have flooded that room. That room, uh, the floor is about three feet below finished grade as it sits now. And, uh, that door, that entry door there, there's a, there's a catch basin. So I think there's a catch basin and funnel, there's water right into the floor. So what needs to be done, as far as I can see, and I will be doing the engineering for this as well, is, uh, I put in, uh, deep dry wells. We are, we have a good elevation there.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, and we not only do we get the surface water that runs from the apartment, not through that alley, you know, on the, on the east side. But we're also getting, uh, uh, the gutters from the, these leaders from the gutters that are on the main roofs from both the church and the parish building, both of those structures are feeding onto that, uh, into that alleyway. And the, that's where the different outcomes comes from, so that's one issue. The other issue is to make the, the room, uh, more serviceable and allow for expanded programming by making it fully ADA compliant.
Right.
And, uh, we have, as you can see with the materials, and we've submitted, you know, a layout for a ramp that would handle that, the free water invasion drop. And we're also, uh, bringing in an elevator inside the building, I, you're concerned, not really, but what we're doing on the inside, we're just uh, let you know how we're dealing with all the issues of ADA compliance. So we'll be putting in an elevator, and we'll also be putting in ADA, uh, two small ADA bathrooms for each floor. Uh, we've been thinking of this alley, alleyway as being sort of a vest pocket park. And we have a planter where the ramp turns, and we would like to continue the, uh, the paving, which we're proposing brick and sand, which is the common for sidewalks in this whole region, certainly in the village. Uh, and let that run out to the curb, in other words, past the property line.
Mm-hmm.
We also feel, and it doesn't say in these documents you have, but we want to put a curb break so that the, uh, full field chairs can go, you know, uh, jump to, you know, there's a curb, the curb itself is now a barrier.
Right.
Yeah, even though we have ha- uh, uh, parking for, uh, handicap parking designated in those areas. There's no way, if you get out of your car there, to get up onto the curb.
You have to go all the way around to the corner or something?
Corner, exactly, right. So we see that, and, and then since we'd be breaking up the curb anyway, then that brick, uh, would flow out and again be a welcoming apron to this place. There'll be a few benches and, uh, additional plantings.
Yeah.
And, uh, that's, that's the overall approach. Uh, we haven't, we're not into working drawings yet, I've been holding the reins on that until we see that this, that the conceptually, that, uh, you can look on this favorably and tell us what's, what's pursuing that direction.
I think it sounds wonderful.
Yeah. I would, I would actually recommend, like, talk to the, uh, village about, uh, striping out a handicap parking spot here with a striped area.
That would be wonderful.
So that it's designated where the ramp would be, you know, the curb.
Exactly, directly like, in front of that.
That would be most welcome, because the overflow parking from the village makes it impossible for people who can't fit in the two spaces by the corner to get into the building at all.
Right, right.
Right, makes a lot of sense. The, the brick would go across the, where the existing sidewalk is?
It, it would, it would, which is different, the front of the church, the brick ends at the portico and doesn't go to the sidewalk. We're suggesting that it would go all the way out to sort of, um, be a flashlight to people. This is where you come in for AA, for camp, for all the different organizations that meet there.
And, and a bench.
And a bench.
And it becomes, again, that park becomes the, like, the entrance to the parks in place to sit and.
So right now with the, between the asphalt and the cement, it's just sending all the water into the building, but with the brick, it allows
it's a perme.
Some, some level of absorption, that's, that's another concern.
Is the sidewalk a different jurisdiction though? If that's an existing sidewalk?
That, it is, that's the villages.
Right.
Um, but they could, they can work with de yardly, if, if that, you know, and, and it would have to go through Department of Public Works for sure.
Okay.
Um, but it's not, it's been done.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, we, uh, there, there are public sidewalks and, and there, uh, you know, other places which are built by private concerns.
But they're of different material than the rest of the existing sidewalk, that was more my question.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I, I mean, I'm assuming the cut going down and the ADA space make all the sense in the world. I just didn't know on a, you know, it's probably a de yardly question.
Yeah, be, be, uh, but I'm sure, as long as it's, well, I'm not sure about anything, but I would think, I would think that it's.
That might be something to investigate.
To ask that question.
It's a good question to ask, um, but I like, I, I, I like the idea of that. I like what you're trying to do, which is create a welcoming space. It's almost like a, almost like a, a plaza, if you will, um, and where none exists now.
Yeah.
Um, so everyone understands this is a good entrance.
Yeah, exactly.
And if you have it where there is, um, ADA parking, it make, it's completely logical that
Yeah.
people would flow in that direction. So, uh, it, it, it's sensible.
Yes.
Yeah, um, this, this seems great to me. Let me ask about those, are those trees that are on the plan, the, the green circles?
Yes, uh, uh, one exists now.
Yeah.
And, and I'm proposing the second, the one that, that's closest to the, uh, the actual street. It, it already exists.
Yeah.
In that size and that location.
Yeah, I see that in the picture, right, okay. Um, I think it's, it's a great project. I, I like, I like the, doing this to make it more accessible for everyone. Um, I assumed it was all going up, I didn't know you were going down, and you quite.
Yeah, yeah.
You get that.
The building's two stories.
Okay.
Right, so they, so the people would come in who need handicap access through the lower level. They'd come into the building and straight ahead would be the elevator, to the right would be the lower room.
Right.
And then it would take them up, and in fact, the way it's designed, if you still wanna throw your Bible friddle bouquet in the balcony on the second floor, created by Mrs. Aldrich, you can still do that.
I'm glad that tradition continues, that's a, that's a good one, you know. Wonderful, okay, good. Um, Kathy, do you have any comments as a, as a, as a planning person?
The only thing that I noticed was a proposed sanitary line, so are you looking to relocate the sanitary?
We are, we, we have it, uh, getting prepared of, uh, sanitary system, it stops, um, at, at the corner, it stops on the other side of one fourteen, you know, what, what is, one fourteen is called, the Hampton Street. And, um, but there, there are plans to extended on Union, up Union.
Yeah, for the sewer district, right, okay.
Right, right, right. So, yeah.
Yeah.
We think that, that's it everyone, yeah.
Yeah, it'd be great.
Because we wanna offload the, the old-fashioned, uh, septic wells that are there now.
Right.
Yeah, just so that the building use could be, continue to grow.
Well, that, that, we, we can have that conversation. At, at present, I believe the plans are to have it terminate just prior to that intersection.
Right.
Um, so you're, you're suggesting that maybe that can be rethought, or some conversations can be had.
We're gonna have that conversation too.
Okay, right here.
Maybe more conversations.
I hear that.
That would, that would be to the board trustees, but.
That's, that is, that is the board, that is the board trustees.
Okay.
Um, but it, but it seems to me that if you were doing this, this project and you went to the board trustees, they might, they would be listening to you, sure.
Okay. Great.
Yeah, um, I think it's a great plan.
Thank you.
Um, is there anything, anything of you folks wanna say?
No, I think it's great, I mean, I'm, I'm, I know the church, and my daughter spent, uh, Girl Scouts down in that room. So I, I know that space, and I'm happy to see it's getting, you know, there's some proposal to improve it, so.
Sort of, yeah, just wanna more you, your honest, more heavily utilized, yes. All right, thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you for coming in.
Oh, sure, sure.
Okay.
Wouldn't it be, I'm sending out, out of line or an empty breach, if I could make some comments about the case, the library?
Um, I think it is set up, I, I'm sorry.
It would be out of line, only because we just set a public hearing, if you can come back for the public hearing, put your comments in writing to the board. That would be great, cause then, then they're actually here to address your comments too. Yeah, so they just set up public hearings, so the public hearing features, would be noticed in the paper. Yeah, we'll be back here anyway, right? Very opportunity.
Thank you all.
Nice having you, come on back, yeah, thank you very much. Good. Um, well, that's, that's a nice thing to see, isn't it? Excellent. Um, I think that's everything on the agenda, right? Because I lost my agenda in front of me.
That's it.
That's it, um, thank you. Um, if anyone would like to, nothing would have anything else to say, I'd accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
So moved by Granja, seconded by Ron, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And congratulations, Drew, you had your first meeting under your belt.
Thanks.
Good.
Good.
Excellent.
Hi Barbara. Hi Barbara.
Thank you Barbara, you take care.
Have a good night.
Bye bye, you as well.
Thank you.